There's always major things going on at that place. A gavel.
Eppis Community School District Regular Board of Education Meeting. Today is Monday, May 13th. We appreciate everyone's attendance tonight and we look forward to welcoming all of the years of service that many of the people have given our district. I'm sorry? You can't hear me?
Yeah, you can.
Can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect. So, before we start the meeting, I'd like someone to read the approval of the agenda.
I move that the Agenda of Monday, May 13th, 2019 Board of Education Meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Second, please.
Second.
This is a roll call action.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Vice President Meisterlein.
Aye.
Thank you. The next, I'm going to open this up to a public hearing. This is going to be for the fiscal year 2018-19 Budget Amendment. And I ask at this time if anyone has any comments or objections that they please address the board at the podium at this time. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close out the public hearing. And next, I'm going to turn this over to Lynda Nagle. We are going to recognize employees that have served 25 years, 30 years, 35 years, 40 and 45 years in the district. Board members, I'll ask that you stand in front of the dais.
Good evening. I have the honor of recognizing some of our longevity of employees who have been here for 25, 30, 35, 40 and 45 years. So, awful long time with our district. Just to open up here, the Cedar Rapids Community School District and the Foundation are proud to honor the following employees for their 25, 30, 35, 40 and 45 years of continuous service in the district. The board and the Foundation appreciates immensely the efforts of our employees, especially those who have contributed so many years. Some of the recipients who have achieved these milestones are present this evening and will be accepting their awards. All of the names are on, in your board packet. I will be reading only those that are here this evening. But I'd like to start off, before I start saying the names, to remind everyone what just was happening 25 years ago. So, just a couple little tidbits if you don't remember. So, 25 years ago would have been 1993. Gas prices were $1.16. Just a little. Movie tickets were $4.14. Anybody who went to the Avengers recently know you're paying a little bit more than that today. And a new car was about $12,750. So, just a couple of things. So, we'll get started here with the names of the people for 25 years. So, first up is Carol Brochel. Brochel, sorry, thank you. Amy Brown. Peggy Griffin. Karen Kaiser. Luann Moody. Karen Rudd. Lisa Susko. And Sarah Swayze. Okay, and so next will be our 30 years, which would have been 1988. Couple of tidbits. Gas, 91 cents. Eggs, 65 cents. Milk, $1.89. I love these prices, they're just so fun. And, this is an interesting one. IBM PC computer with a monitor, $1,259. Alright, so 30 years, here we go. Cecilia Carey. Suzie Kettleson. Carmen Larson. Melody Lodge. Rhonda Michaels. Denise Pep. Pape, sorry. Nancy Rowe. Thank you. Okay, in 45 years, gas prices, this would have been in 1973. Gas prices were 40 cents. It's kind of fun. The average income, so now you'll see how far you've come. The average income, $12,900. The Sears Tower opened in Chicago. And popular TV shows, The Odd Couple, The Waltons and MASH. Did you watch any of those? Alright. Well, help me recognizing Daniel Ryan for 45 years of service.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
Thank you all so much for your years of service. We cannot thank you enough for all you've given the district.
So, in addition to that annual recognition, it is also School Board Recognition Month. So, I'd like to take just a moment here to honor our board members. And some of you have heard some of these things said from me similarly over the time and they still remain the case. So, what I would want to thank this board for first is your volunteers. So, thank you for volunteering your time and all the efforts and hard work you put into being school board members. It's very much appreciated. And what I would say, in the experiences I've had with you over the four years, you're a board that's been focused on improvement and on putting in systems into place to lead to success for all of our students. And as part of that, you've cast a vision of equity and access and I very much appreciate that about all of you. And so, as we think about where we are in this moment, we are in year two of a five-year strategic plan that has come to life in some really important ways. I'm not going to highlight all those tonight, but I would want to honor things like making diversity a priority in our HR department and work that's underway there. The progress being made on our Facility Master Plan, and we're going to hear an update on that tonight. Telling our story with stories. Work related to intercultural development inventory. The work that's underway on the profile of a graduate and especially what we're doing and thinking about data on college-ready pathways for our students. And you've kept an emphasis on AP and at the same time expanded opportunities with dual credit, Project Lead the Way and other career pathways, career and tech ed. The work with digital literacy and access. And, most recently, and I'll highlight this in my superintendent report, we had nine schools certified as Level One in the High Reliability Schools Framework. So, this is just a smattering of the work that's been underway and things about which I think and know you are all proud. And I would just say this, as the superintendent, you've been incredibly kind to me and continue to be focused on improving experiences of our staff in addition to our students. And so, for that, thank you. And I...
Is your green light on, Mary?
Yeah.
Oh, I think we're, are we back on now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. It's always nice to recognize years of service and I'm always impressed at how many people stay as long as they do in the district. So, it tells me it's a good place to work. I hope it continues to be as the future rolls out. So, next is the superintendent report. I'll turn this over to Dr. Brad Buck.
Alright, thank you. Last week, Kenwood 3rd through 5th graders were able to experience a farmer fair, which included an in-school field trip that brings farmers and nutrition educators into schools to teach kids about food systems that are nourishing for people and the planet. Students rotated through five activities, including exploring soil science and composting in the school garden, tasting locally grown food prepared by Cedar Rapids Schools Nutrition Services and Food Corps, learning about the day in the life of an Iowa farmer and observing bees making honey. This spring, Iowa students in grades 3 through 8 were challenged to develop games that help people learn about water resources, conservation and water quality. The Water Game Jam competition was sponsored by the Iowa Conservation Education Coalition through an Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council Innovation Fund Award, with additional support from Aquatic Wild. The competition allowed the students to design analog games, I like this, this is parenthetically, card games, board games and role-playing games, or essentially the games I grew up with. Or, digital games for a variety of targeted audiences. Five 3rd grade teams, 3rd grade students from Taylor Elementary have won honorable mention in the statewide competition and attended family night at the Science Center of Iowa in Des Moines on May 10th. Congratulations to these participating Taylor students. Students at Erskine Elementary participated in the school-wide assembly last week around bicycle safety. The day also included a visit from Lynn County Safe Schools Coalition who fitted every Erskine Eagle with a free bike helmet. A big shout-out goes to Franklin Middle School's 8th grade band on their best-in-class win at the Adventureland Festival of Bands recently. The group performed two pieces of music for a panel of judges and received the highest rating in their classification. Some of our Cedar Rapids School District high school students are preparing for a unique exchange program that'll land them in Japan this summer. The Japanese teachers from Jefferson, Kennedy and Washington High Schools were recently informed by the consulate general of Japan in Chicago that they've been selected to participate in the Kakahashi Project this summer. Between the three high schools' Japanese programs, 22 students and three chaperones will participate in an educational exchange program to Japan with all costs for airfare, transportation in Japan, meals, lodging, travel insurance, entry fees, all borne by the Japanese Ministry of Foreign Affairs. So, students and their parents and guardians and chaperones attended a kickoff last week, it was on Friday night, I think, at Jefferson. So, finally, we have some incredible news about the progress recently made by nine Cedar Rapids schools on their High Reliability Schools journey. I'm pleased to share, and I mentioned it in my notes to the board, the board tonight, that Harding Middle School and Hiawatha, Madison, Van Buren, Garfield, Coolidge, Truman, Kenwood and Jackson Elementary Schools have all achieved Level One certification in the Marzano High Reliability Schools. Level One certification means these schools have created a safe and collaborative culture as measured by Marzano Institute. Day-to-day school operations are addressed and evaluated in Level One. These operations are identified by eight leading indicators that encompass being a safe and orderly school, engaging in shared decision-making, creating opportunities for parents, students and staff to give input, making a commitment to collaborative teaming, recognizing and celebrating students and staff and using resources to maximize teaching and learning. Congratulations to these nine schools, as well as our other buildings who continue to work passionately and aggressively to create safe and collaborative learning environments for all of our students. So, good news, good news.
Very nice. Thank you for sharing that with us. Next are board reports. Does anyone from the board have a report they'd like to share at this time? Jennifer?
Yep, I just am continuing school visits, which I love to do. Garfield, Truman and Harrison, they all have exciting things going on. Some of them are very close to also being Level One. So, that was part of our conversation, it was good stuff.
Good, thank you. Raphael?
Yes, thanks. So, I just wanted to get everyone up to date on the Safe, Equitable and Thriving Communities Fund. So, in total, there was about $40,000 that was available to fund grant proposals for this coming summer. And in total, I believe there was seven or eight programs. The organizations that applied and did receive funding and will kind of fill a void and fill that need for some of our at-risk students this summer are the African-American Museum of Iowa, Boys and Girls Club, Eastern Iowa African Diaspora, Eastern Iowa Arts Academy, Jane Boyd Community House, Kids First Law Center, LBA Foundation and Tanager Place. And there's a range of different programming from some customer service workshops, professional kind of work preparing type things, up to, I believe, some arts and music and a few other things that'll be available. So, I'm excited to actually see that happen this summer.
Yeah, very nice. Thank you. Any other reports? Gary?
Just a couple of things. Although we've, legislatively, they've wrapped up the session for the year, I think it's appropriate we start looking at legislative priorities for next year. I know, within not too long, we're going to be asked by the School Board Association to submit. So, just something to kind of put in the, put some thought to. There might be some things, as we reflect, that we might even want to write our own item to be presented. I meet this week with the exec board, the Iowa School Board exec board. We meet on Wednesday and Thursday this week and I'm sure that will be also part of our review and discussion. So, with that, I guess it's too late to put a motion on the, Jennifer, but I'd like to move that we double our pay for the school board. I think that we could do that, yeah. We could quadruple, yeah. I think, I don't know if it's in the budget or not, but we'll make, make it. No, I just, I'm serious, I know we're recognized, but it's, I really appreciate working with the board and serving the community and thank you for the recognition tonight, so.
Thank you. Well said. Any other reports from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll move over to Communications, Delegations and Petitions. And I do have a request to address the school board by Lawrence Wenkowsky. Lawrence, please state your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Sure, Lawrence Wenkowsky, 4234 Morrell Road, Northeast. Some of yous may find this difficult, but recently, there was a couple of things that happened to me that made me happy. And that, and really, you know, and I don't know if it's because of sort of like this type of narcissism I have, or if it's a social media acknowledgement addiction that it's partly related to, but I sent out a few emails and I got acknowledgements of them. And actually, I got one, I got a response from. And, you know, we send things out. I guess alls we're looking for is an acknowledgement. Sort of like when you greet somebody and say, "How you doing?" And that. And, you know, I know you go on Facebook and you can do things like give people a plus up and things like that. But I'm not aware if you can do that with the different, with emails. You know, I know there's, you know, some emails allow you the opportunity to just send, you know, when you send an email, you can get a receipt that the person opened it. And that, I know you can't do that on Gmail and that. But, you know, I just think that that's sort of a nice thing to have. And, you know, it's, it'd be nice if somebody actually had something that when you get an email and you read it, you can just hit a plus sign and it sends something off and that. So, that was one of the things I wanted to touch base on. The other thing is, you know, being on social media with Dr. Buck's acknowledgement or the announcement that he was leaving, I think many of the, I shouldn't say many, there were people within our community who are very shallow with some of their comments and definitely did not really have, they didn't have a clue about what goes on within the district. And one of the reasons I'm bringing this up, and I hope some of them are listening to this and actually wish they would get more involved, to make an effort to find out what's happening in your school. What, turn, watch a board meeting, find out what's happening at board meetings. And that, you know, because a lot of great things have happened in the four years that Dr. Buck's been here. I'll be the first to admit, we have never, have not agreed on every, everything. But, what I will, is one trait he does have that I really admire is, he always listens and then he always goes ahead and tells you, you know, what he thinks about, you know, the conversation. And then, and he's honest about it. And that's something that doesn't happen a lot. And I know, part of the thing is, people are jealous that, you know, and that you've actually made a decision in your life to put your family first. And that is something, a lot of people, you know, we forget about a lot in life, is putting our family first. And that's something that, you know, I can't compliment you enough about. One thing is though, I'll be honest with you, I'm a little jealous too. Because you're going to get to, my understanding is, you get to go to school board meetings now where they actually start with the pledge of allegiance. And that. I didn't, you know, I think that would be, you know, that's, that's a great thing. And that. So, anyway, you know, I just want to generally say, you know, I'll have more opportunities probably in the future to say this, but while I'm still here in Ken, I'd like to say, thank you for your service to the district. And, you know, I truly wish you and your family, you know, the best for the future. And I also wish this district the best, because I think you've set a lot of strong foundations in place which give us the opportunity to go forward and strive forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Next is our consent agenda and I ask at this time if anyone would like to pull any singular item for separate consideration. Any questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda? Okay, this is a roll call action due to the Personnel Report and Base Wage Increase of Employment.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Vice President Meisterlein.
Aye, thank you. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Buck and Dave Nicholson to talk about our Facilities Master Plan update.
Yeah, so I'll do a little frame-up and then Dave's got some details here for you. So, you recall well, I'm sure, in January of 2018, guided by a process that went on for about 18 months, Facility Master Plan came in front of this board and it was approved. And it's really, the conceptual idea is moving from fewer smaller elementaries to, or more, so, from smaller elementarys to fewer larger elementaries over time. That's sort of the conceptual idea. And one of the, one of the things that was a part of it is, the plan wouldn't go into motion until the extension of the SAVE penny occurred. So, what we know in this last session is that the extension of the SAVE penny has occurred. It's passed in the House and the Senate and it's waiting the governor's approval. And we are pretty confident that the governor's signature will happen later this month. We can talk a little bit about sort of how timelines play out here, but we're moving forward with that. Been giving periodic updates on the Facility Master Plan and have been making progress on, so the first school that we're going to work on is Coolidge. And Coolidge is the first school because it has the greatest needs done by, we did a review of our facilities as part of that Facility Master Plan process and it has the greatest set of needs. So, Coolidge has always been the school that we're going to work on first. And then, this is Phase One of Tier One. We would then, so, build a new Coolidge on the Coolidge site, then move to Jackson, build a new Jackson on the Jackson site and then repurpose Truman as a part of that process. That's been a conversation of Phase One since this was passed back in January of 2018. So, with all of that, we have some additional details tonight about where we are in that process. And it's important to keep in mind, we do, did do an RFP process for architects along the way here. We have identified OPN as our partner in that and we began work with them on the community engagement part of the plan to build Coolidge. And now, we have an update on where things stand, knowing now that SAVE has been passed. So, that's hopefully some contextualization of where we are to get things going tonight. With that, Dave's got some additional details.
First of all, I want to say I'm very excited that SAVE is on the cusp of being signed. So, that is very exciting that we can start moving forward on, you know, building our plan. So, and for right now, some of the actions that have occurred during the course of this year is that we engage in communication process to help internal and external staff members with, understand our Facility Master Plan as it is and the timelines associated with it. Also, we've advocated for collaboration with various stakeholders for funding and so, that has helped because now we're going to get the extension of SAVE. So, that's really good. And the big piece is, let's get things going. So, with implementation of Phase One of the plan, that's kind of what we're going to talk about tonight and, and then how that kind of fits in the long-term where things are standing. Right now, we're talking about the big picture. This is kind of the plan that was, Facility Master Plan, talked about the different tiers. And, and all along, we've always talked about, we're going to have to pause, you know, as we go along through the process. And so, Tier One, I want to say a little correction here. We're talking about Jackson and Coolidge. Coolidge would be in the first and Jackson. Arthur's listed here, but Arthur is, is really further down, but that's kind of where we thought initially with all discussions was that's where it was going to be. Right now, it's repurposing a Truman. And then, what's important to note, Tier Two is basically five buildings. Do we know what buildings are there going to be? Are there going to be those buildings that are listed here? May or may not. It's all going to depend on the needs at that time where things fall. But it's important to note that we were thinking about five schools in Tier Two and then the remainder happened in Tier Three. So, Phase One, Coolidge, Jackson, funding here. So, we knew, all know that this was contingent on extension of SAVE. So, SAVE has passed with some couple amendments, important amendments to note. Right now, there's a, the property tax relief peel-off that's happening and that's actually happening starting next year. Not with the extension, but immediately. And how that rolls out is 1% per year if our revenue growth exceeds 2%. So, if revenue growth does not exceed 2%, it will not have the 1% peel-off. But that goes all the way up to a maximum of 30%. So, right now, it's like 2.1%. So, next year, if the SAVE grows by over 2, it will be 3.1% peel-off. And then, going forward from that point on. The other piece is, it repeals our current revenue purpose statements, effective January 1, 2031. That's important to note because right now, we would have to at some point in time approve a new revenue purpose statement. What's good is, our current revenue purpose statement that we have in place runs to that time and it does provide us enough funding to move forward with our plan, at least for Phase One. So, that's a good note. Now, total asset spending costs. We're looking right now, based on the current market conditions that exist today and looking at a 3% inflationary cost for construction, where we would pretty much go out for bid, we're thinking that to fund both Coolidge and Jackson is going to be in a ballpark of $50 million. So, coming out of the chute, we would probably look at issuing 25 million for Coolidge initially in hopes that it would actually come in less than that, hopefully, in hopes that it would maybe come in closer to 23.5 million is kind of what our hopes. And if that did happen that way, we probably wouldn't need to issue as much then for Jackson, we would just adjust. If we have money carried over, those dollars would carry over to Jackson Project. So, it would not be like we would be sitting on something that we wouldn't be spending. So it would not be like we would be sitting on something that we wouldn't be spending. It would just kind of roll into Jackson and then we would issue less bonds for Jackson. So phase one. So when we're looking at, okay, so what does that mean? Okay, what's our total available? And how I'm framing this is based on our current revenue purpose statement authority. We have authority that goes through 2031, January 1st. How much money can we generate at this point in time with using conservative estimates? And if based on a 1% sales tax revenue, uh, using that per year, which is fairly conservative based on the LSA estimates is a little bit higher than that, but when we're doing estimates for bar, we want to be conservative as much as possible. So that means that we have approximately $199 million in revenue that we would generate through that point in time. So currently, we do have some commitments. We have about 127 million of commitments. Current debt that we're paying off, uh, we have technology commitments, it's a 2.6 million a year to fund technology. We have some leases that we have that we are obligated to pay and we are currently doing the stadium project that's coming out of SAVE. So we do have some commitments and it totals about 127 million. We do the math, that leaves about 72 million to fund our, our, uh, master facility plan through the current revenue purpose statement authority period. This is not going in the extension piece, this is just going in what's available, basically to fund what would be phase one, tier one. And one of the things that we have to understand, what are the impacts? We have, I mean, uh, we also, we're limited by our bond, uh, our coverage, bond coverage rate, which means is for every dollar of debt that you have, you need to have basically here a dollar 20 or a dollar 30 to cover that debt revenue. I mean, for every debt you have, you need to have a dollar 20 of revenue coming in to cover that debt. So right now, um, we are, initially, we were kind of basing it off of our first estimates that we were running was 1.5, but then we were able to scale that back and, uh, we haven't got official notice, but it sounds like our bond rating is going to be going up, which is good news. So we might be able to get closer to a 1.2 to 1.5 coverage level, which means that provides us a ability to borrow more funds. So what's our next steps for Coolidge? So one of the things that we need to do is to move forward, we're going to have to start the bonding process. And the first step in doing that bonding process is to hire a Piper Jaffray as a representative for doing a private placement sale for the bonds. Private placement sale is, uh, the, the matter which we really want to go is actually, it provides us, we don't have to have reserve funds when you do a private placement, so, which allows us to have more revenue available for projects. So that's kind of what we would really push for is a private placement. And so with, uh, with Piper Jaffray doing that, they would then immediately go to work and trying to get banks to quote on that private placement. The next step is we need to have a bond cancel. So we need to have that adopted as well, select a bond cancel. Right now, uh, we're looking at, uh, uh, Dorsey Whitney to do that. I've drawn a blank off top, my head, Dorsey Whitney, who is with, tied in with our Dallas, Linnstallas attorneys to do that. So then we'll actually looking at selling the bonds, okay? That might, uh, require us to do a special meeting to actually approve the sale of that in between now and our June meeting, some point in time if those bids come in and they're able to do that, that might require us to do a quick special meeting, which might be a 10 minute meeting in the max to be able to approve the sale of those bonds. So then we're in the process, we're going to be sending OPN, our contract OPN with our attorneys to get all that finalized and have that ready for board's adoption in June. And we complete our bonding process in June. And then we need to, the big piece that we need to do as well, another big piece is have our meetings, initial meetings with the city and those have to happen by June 30. And the reason why that is important is that meeting is, is the location of where we like to cite Coolidge is on city property right now and we need to relocate those mall diamonds on our property once that construction happens. So that, those are those conversations that will happen with the city. So here's the implementation snapshot, okay? Right now, this is kind of a plan that we were working off of and I have this before you just to kind of show, April is kind of when we were initially going to start planning and with, uh, construction documents being completed, ready at the end of December. Right now, things have already shifted a month, okay? So we are ready, uh, everything is going, pushing out further and I think that's what leads to importance of us moving forward because if you start pushing things forward too far, you run the risk of not being able to meet, to have things ready for opening the school in August of 2021, so. So after we do Coolidge, what were the next steps? For Jackson, one of the things, it's not necessarily necessary to do this right now, but we would need to go off for a new revenue purpose statement. We know we will need it, we'll be in for beyond Jackson. So because of the new election law, um, if you're familiar with that, new election law, in odd years or three dates that you can actually go out for a vote. First Tuesday of March, second Tuesday of September and the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November. That's odd years. Even years, you only have two, uh, election times. That's the first Tuesday of March and the second Tuesday of September. So when you look at September, if we go out to vote in September and for some reason that failed, okay, for some reason if that actually did fail, we would have to wait a year for an election because we would miss the six months, because usually it's a six months window. Because the six month window puts you one week shy of the March date. So it forces it out a year. That is something that, uh, all of us, as we noticed as like, that wasn't, I don't think that was necessarily the intent. We hope that wasn't the intent that says you have a six months, if something fails a six months window. So I think there might be some discussion in the future of trying to address that legislatively next year to kind of rectify that piece. But that, that, I just want to be aware, that's why I would say let's start that in September of 19, to get that process rolling, just in case, I don't anticipate that failing, but just in case we actually be able to go back to a year from now and then we can start with our plans going forward. So within fall of 2019 or 20, we will actually be looking at, for our plan, refinance current sales tax revenue bonds that we have in place. That, and right now, our plan is to refinance those just in the window of revenue purpose bonds period at this point in time. And that would happen in, in the fall of 2019 or in 20, that we'd be looking at doing the refinancing those current bonds that we have outstanding. And then in the summer or fall of 20, we would actually be selling the bonds for Jackson. We would be at that stage that we're ready to sell those bonds and we move forward for that. And that amount, either 25 million, it could be a little bit less than that depending on how Coolidge comes in. So after Jackson, what we said is we're going to pause and assess where we're at. And going forward from that point in time, there'll be a lot of pausing probably and calculations to see where we're at and how the funding is. And right now, we're going to be looking at inflation costs for construction, see how that's coming in, we're going to be looking at interest rates. We're going to, hopefully our bond rating stays very strong because that has impacts in our availability. We're going to look at, so, uh, now, GO bonds might have to come into play. Phase two, one, tier one and tier two. As of right now, it appears, using our conservative numbers that Piper Jaffray has ran the numbers, it appears that we can complete tier one and tier two with our current funding. And possibly start even doing some of tier three. But tier three is a little foggy. That's where we might have to supplement GO bonds at that point in time. But a lot of things can change between now and then. I mean, there's a lot of years before we get to phase three and depending on how the revenues come in, depending on how sales tax, you know, growth happens, there's a lot of variables that may not even require that to be an issue. We may not have to do that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, GO bonds could come into play down, down the road to, in phase three.
Dave, can you explain what GO bonds are for those that don't know?
Yes. General obligation bonds, those are the bonds that are property tax based that you have to go to the voters and approve and that is funded through for property tax. And that's what I have, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions. John?
I, I would just say, you know, we, we spent a number of years progressing on this and we had a community-based plan and I'm glad that we put these pauses in because things have changed and we knew they would change. So I would just say, you know, moving forward that the board consider, the district consider re-implementing, um, the committee to take a look when we get beyond these first two schools. I think once the community starts to have the input, the discussions about what they would like to see in these communities, these neighborhoods for their elementary schools, that might help inform some of the other neighborhoods that are thinking about what they may want. And it may be different from different parts of town, obviously, but I think again, that, that process to have people from the community with different expertises, different viewpoints will be helpful. And again, these pauses, um, are really important as we move forward.
Good point.
And may I just add, in addition to that, completely agree, in addition to that, we're also going to need to begin a conversation along the way about the middle schools in particular, because the middle schools are going to need attention over time in Cedar Rapids. And then one of the things I hear a lot about, and I'm guessing you do too, is athletic and activity facilities and what that might mean. We did, we've done significant investment in the high schools, over $60 million over the last six or eight years. So the high schools, um, are really in pretty good shape and now I'm sure they would identify things that they would like and have needs around. But yeah, I agree, I agree, John, there's more work to do here with community engagement around facilities.
But, you know, and as you mentioned that, I'll just say too, that, um, we have 40 acres of land clear out on the far west side of town along the highway 100 bypass that we've been renting that farmland. And we bought that at a very reasonable price, we've been renting it, but it's been sitting there knowing that that would develop. And from what I'm hearing, that land out there is ready for development. And again, as the facilities committees continues to look at this, to think about, it may need another elementary school, it may need another middle school as housing with single families grows out in those areas. So again, I think having people, we've had RSP associates come in and try and help us understand some of the growth in town is not families, it's, um, you know, older adults or young, um, young, uh, professionals without children buying condos. And, you know, we don't need to build schools in those areas necessarily, but there are other areas with families and housing growth that we do. And, um, we just need to keep the pulse on that. And again, the enrollments in the district could change up or down in the next five, 10 years. And again, these pauses are just critical, I think.
Good points. Gary?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and a statement. The, the revenue, the new revenue purpose statement when we start Jackson, I'm, I'm a little bit confused because I thought earlier you said that we had within, we had the ability to do phase one or tier one in our current revenue sharing.
We do, we do. And it's just ones that, once you get beyond phase one, we will have to have a new revenue purpose statement for any projects. Could we wait a year to try to vote that? Yes, we could. Uh, but if we're ready, we could actually start that vote. And if it didn't fail, we would still, our current one is still active until 2030, January 1st, 2031. I mean, yeah.
So that, yeah, right. And I think you just clarified, but I'll restate what I was hearing then that this new revenue statement would take into the tier two schools that we currently did not have in our revenue sharing. So it would cover, uh, it would cover that.
See, that's, that's what's really important to note is we, the good news, we don't have to move that quickly because we would have to wait until September for a vote because that's the earliest we could do it. We actually have that ability to do it without that. And that's what's important to note because that's, that's a good thing right now because we do have the funding. We have not maxed out our funding currently to 2000, our current, before the extension, we have not maxed that out. So we do have the ability to delay that if we'd like. But unless, I think it's just as good to note for some reason that we, you know, we got to give ourselves a little bit buffer if we, if for some reason that first go around, it did not pass, so.
And the new, our, our new election, um, uh, moving the school board elections to November along with that, that also has some implications on, on some of the revenue sharing implications on, on recall or petitions and so on by the, the number of voters. So.
Yes.
Will have a, will have an impact. And I also have some questions, it says school board elections, well, does that mean that everyone that, not everyone that participates in the general election may participate in the school part of it? So do, do we use the numbers of the whole, everyone that registered to vote or just those that, does the percentage go to just those that voted for a school board candidate?
On the recall?
Well, yeah, on the percent, on, when we look at the number that participated in the school board election.
Yeah, it's a total participates in the general election is my understanding.
Oh, okay.
So the recall percentage will be based on the total number of voters in that, isn't that?
I, I thought it said, I thought it says, uh, the most recent school board.
Yeah, and the school board election in November is a general election, so it will be the.
Right.
So the, so the belief would be when you're in filling out the ballot for school board members, you're also filling out the ballot for what, the other city and county officials or members on that ballot. So it'll be the, it'll be the total number of, so the assumption would be that all the people that are participating in that election are also participating in the school board election, if that makes sense. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it'll probably be, yeah.
That would be a good thing to clarify though, I think, for all of us, just to confirm that. Gary, you'll be at the IASB board meeting, right? So.
I, it's been.
So they should know.
Well, I will bring it up and see where we're at with it. Yeah, there are a lot of questions, I think, hanging out there. And I appreciate, Dr. Buck, you mentioned in the middle school too, because, uh, I think as we move forward, before even we finish phase three, we're really going to, I mean, that's a ways out, we're going to really need to look at our, our middle school, middle school situation.
Yeah, and, and for some additional context, um, these are just general numbers, but they're pretty close. So at the $2.70 rate on the taxable valuation, uh, with GO bonds, we'd have access to about $200 million in addition to all this SAVE revenue. And at the 405, we'd have access to about $311 million. That's all in addition to the SAVE funding. So there is additional opportunity for, uh, revenue within the community to take a look at these facility plans going forward. So this isn't the only source of revenue and there's some real money available, um, depending on how the community looks at what to do with middle schools, et cetera.
Right. A lot of pauses built in and a lot of reflection because as we've seen this last year, things can change in the blink of an eye.
Yeah, so the.
Going from 2% to 30% on that.
Yeah, so this board's, uh, vision to approach this plan with sort of a, a, a long-term vision of where it is intended to go with intentionality and pausing along the way is, is really smart because there's so many things that can change and to Gary's point, I don't think anybody would have been predict, predicting a 30% peel off for tax, property tax reduction on the SAVE extension for, not as a criticism, glad it got passed, but I don't think anybody would have predicted that. We're also in a unique inflationary spot as it relates to construction costs due to tariff situations, for example. And that wasn't necessarily on people's radar either. So this idea of pausing and really understanding what the current state is before going to the next phases is, it just makes really great sense.
So Dave, I just need clarification on one thing and kind of along that vision and eventually where we want to go with those pauses and I think what we would all want to see, especially in the community, so that revenue purpose statement, how far out, you know, assuming we make that change, it's voted on, how far out would that take us?
I think that will take us out until the sunset date, which is 2051.
All right, thanks.
Other questions or comments?
Unless, unless the board decides to shorten it, they would have that ability to shorten it, they didn't want to go out that far. But most people don't, so.
Okay, good discussion, good questions. And I'll just echo what Dr. Buck said, that putting in these pauses has really given us a lot of flexibility and opportunity to adapt to change in legislation or, um, other changes that we didn't anticipate. So, good job, board. And Dr. Buck, thank you. Okay, next I'm going to turn this over to, uh, Dr. Trace Pickering to talk. to talk about an update on BIG.
Hey, may I just say this, because I don't want it to be misread. I have to leave at about 6:30 for, for an event at Jefferson at 6:20.
So we have nine minutes.
Yeah, so, no, you guys are welcome to go a little longer, but if I get up at 6:30, it's, and I shuffle my papers like I'm angry, it's not you. It's just, I need to, so I apologize if I, if I do that in advance, so.
Good evening, Vice President Maestro Ling, board members, Dr. Buck. Thank you for allowing us to provide you an update on Iowa BIG. My name is Carolyn Miller, and I'm a senior at BIG in Washington High School. So our mission statement of Iowa BIG is to unleash human potential. I'd like to share with you my story about Iowa BIG, about how Iowa BIG has helped me unleash my potential. Okay, so for me, BIG has unleashed my potential and shown me a lot about professionalism. I have been able to meet a lot of professionals in the community and been able to learn how to interact with them better and how to present myself better, clothing-wise or handshake-wise and eye contact and et cetera. It has also taught me a lot about friendliness in the sense of meeting friends from different schools, because Iowa BIG, if you don't know, is Lynnmar, Prairie, Kennedy, and Wash, and Jeff. And so I've met a lot of new friends from other schools that I probably otherwise wouldn't have met, from different backgrounds, which has been amazing. But then it also has taught me friendliness with the teachers or mentors. They're not seen as peers, but they treat you kind of as you are. And they don't just teach you, they let you, they give you pushes and help you figure stuff out in a different way. And it's just been an amazing experience with that. It has also been meaningful because of the different projects I've been on, being able to help the community in volunteer ways or in other, in learning ways. For example, one of my projects is, we call it grow kits, but I am helping build different grow kits for families who suffer from food insecurity. And so we have been, this week, building different, building grow kits that are about like three by twos, I think. And then it comes with instructions and recipes for these families to grow their own fresh vegetables and have them whenever they want to. So now I'd like to introduce Armani Smith Gibbs to share her story with you.
Hi, my name is Armani. Excuse my clothes. I just came back from a project when I had a picnic with Roosevelt kids that I'm mentoring. So, so back in November, I was in a situation where I wasn't going to graduate this year, and I am, and I did honor roll last semester and this semester. So for me, BIG has done a lot for me. At first, I was doing part-time at Kennedy High School and then at Iowa BIG. And then there was a point where I just wasn't feeling motivated enough to go to Kennedy. So there was a way for me to be full-time at BIG, which I am at now. And it helped me, the staff there has helped me figure out, like, my career path and what I want to do. It helped me learn leadership in a lot of ways and taking control of certain projects that I'm on. And the staff and the peers there are really welcoming. It wasn't no cliques or, like, stuff like that. And also, I did learn professionalism as well, from writing up appropriate email to partners that I partner with in community, from like, the way I dress, the way I talk, and that has helped me. I also was able to learn about things that I'm passionate about. At Kennedy, I wasn't able to learn about things that I'm really passionate about. If I'm passionate about law and I'm at Kennedy, like, I think the most I can take is like criminal justice, and it was seen as like elective or something. But at BIG, I can do hands-on projects on what I'm passionate about and what I want to learn about. Also, there's a, a big staff named Al O'Bannon, the founder of LBA, that has helped me as well, to help me motivate myself when no one else did, because I struggle with that. And he has helped me get to the point where I'm able to graduate this year. Also, BIG has taught me, BIG has taught me a lot about myself, helped me soul-search a lot this year about what I want to do. And I'd like to ask Trace Pickering, our executive director, to provide an overview of the year.
All right, thank you. Glad to be here with you again to give you the annual BIG update. And at your tables, I left for you the mission and value and purpose statement. People might ask why it took us six years to finally put that on paper. But as you know, we, BIG morphs quickly, we, we learn a lot fast, and we just didn't feel until this year, we were in a place where we could confidently put down on paper what it is we really were about, although I think we've been about these things from, from the beginning. One of the things that we teach our staff and our students is something called the agile mindset, which is a very, is pretty, pretty standard in terms of businesses today, using the agile mindset to improve rapidly in that. And therefore, principles are make people awesome, make safety a prerequisite, experiment and learn rapidly, and deliver value continuously. And so we use that as a framework to insert our values underneath those. And so it has become a consistent part of every meeting with our staff. I ask them, tell me about where you experienced these values happening in the last week at BIG. And we're, we are trying to commit this from paper into head, heart, and hands of our staff and then our students in the following year. This, I just thought was colorful. When we had XQ Super Schools visit a few weeks ago to do some more filming, the students put this mural together, Iowa BIG is, and they got to put whatever sticky or word or comment they wanted on there. I thought that was pretty, pretty indicative of the kinds of things that kids say about, about the program. Here's just a few shots of kids doing some work this year, and another student quote. One of the things I really wanted to share with you tonight is, we had, had the opportunity over the holiday break to interview and survey our alumni. Our oldest alumni are now, well, they probably graduated on Saturday from college. And we wanted to find out some critical information from them, both about their academic preparation, coming out of BIG, were they academically prepared for college, as well as all of the other things that make you successful, not only in college, but in life, the ability to manage your time, your space, your network, to be an advocate for yourself, and so forth. So it's an N of 43, which we felt was a good, a good starting point. Here is some highlights of our alumni data. So students who said they agreed or strongly agreed, or said that was always true or sometimes true. I control my own learning, 100% of our survey, our folks said, yes, they do. They know how to advocate for themselves, 98%. Maximizing their potential, 100%. Involved in their community, still 86%. And they feel empowered as an individual, 100%. And they're doing things that are passion about, 98%. On the more college readiness side, where we are really curious about, about how we are preparing them, because we don't, we don't cover as much content as a traditional classroom would. We cover the standards, but we don't go as deep on the content. We focus on the experiences and the universal constructs and that. And so what, what we found from them is the freedom of time prepared me for college. 98% of the students felt that they had, they were well-prepared for that. Same for space, same for identifying their passions and interests. BIG prepared me for my college coursework. This was a question we asked only if they took an academic course through BIG. Did that, when they took that similar strand in college, how, did they feel prepared? 85% felt prepared. And then it prepared them how to learn in college, 93%. So we're feeling very good about that.
Trace, on the preparation for my college coursework, were you able to discern if where the weakness might be, or where it was a little bit more difficult for the students?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get into the data this summer. Dennis Becker, one of our teachers, is a master's in statist, ed statistics, so I'm gonna turn him loose on that. Preliminary, as we just read through the comments, it tended to be the heavy academic subjects, engineering, pre-med, those kind of things where they had to have some very deep content, but we'll know more at the end of the summer.
The math and science, probably?
Yeah, we only offer one math course, so we didn't get much, we would have gotten much feedback from that.
Okay.
So again, pretty encouraged by that, where that stands. We'll continue to monitor and ask our alumni that. We got, also got a lot of great feedback about how we can get better. This week, I meet with all of the seniors to ask them about how we can make BIG better for, for those students who are going to follow them. Final thing before questions. Again, I just, I want to thank you again for what you did six years ago, when you said yes to a program like this. It's so easy to say no to these kind of things. And the fact that you, you saw the value in this kind of approach and wanted to see how it would play out, and that you said yes, has made a difference for hundreds and hundreds of kids in this community. These two are testament to that. So I thank you for that. And at this time, any of us will take any questions you might have.
Questions, Jennifer?
I don't have a question. I just actually have a comment, and I'd like to start by thanking you ladies. You did a really nice job. I just think it's fantastic that we are really promoting a program where there can be some project-based learning at a higher level in high school. I think the self-actualization that's coming out of our students
is, is huge. I, I really appreciate your work and just wanted to thank you for that.
Yeah, great. Others, Raphael?
So hopefully you could help me, because I have a son that's doing BIG, but he never shares any information with me. I ask questions and I get no answers. So, we have you, so hopefully I can get some answers. So, is this your first year or second year doing BIG? First year. Second, okay. So, in each year, like, how many projects have each of you worked on?
Well, with me being full With me being full-time at BIG, I was originally on four projects, but two of them, like, sunk, so they got dropped. And now I'm on two. So, I guess, people that's part-time at BIG and part-time at their motherships usually do about like three projects, or two, two to three.
Two, okay. Good to know.
I was in the kind of reverse position. I started with two projects, and then one also got dropped because we didn't have a partner with monetary funds. And then I gained another one, so I was back at two. And now towards the end of the year, I've gained it at the third, so.
Now, from the projects you've worked on, what's the one highlight or the one project where you had just a moment of realization, either in you and your abilities, or in the opportunity that was available? Do you have an example of any one thing at one time like that?
For me, working on grow kits, we kind of did some surveys and research on who needed them and how big of a need we had for them at the HACAP food pantry, mobile food pantries. And to me, that was just really like eye-opening and heartwarming to communicate with the actual people that we are going to be giving these grow kits to, and to see how they needed them. And they were super thankful and thought the idea was great. And it was just super heartwarming. And I think a good learning experience too, to how to interact with certain people. And, you know, some people, you just got to communicate with differently and whatever. So that was just, I think, a very good experience for me.
For me, the project where I'm mentoring Roosevelt kids right now, I'm partnered with LBA, like, just, well, the project is trying to help them understand that what makes them unique and what makes them different is okay. Like, it's not, it's not bad to be different. And I think I like it because I didn't have that, you know, in middle school. So being able to instill that into them now, so when they get to high school, understand, like, it's okay.
All right. Thank you.
John?
So Carolyn and Armani, so you talked about this helped kind of solidify plans for the future. Can you tell us a little bit about what, what you're thinking about? And, and I bring this up, I've heard students thinking about going to community college. I've seen them go into the workforce directly. They've had job offers out of this, from what I understand. And then, of course, four-year colleges, and some of them are evidently getting into Ivy League schools and great, amazing scholarship programs and things. So could you just tell us a little bit about what you're kind of thinking about?
I think for me, it's been helpful, because I've been very indecisive my whole life, but I thought that you had to, like, know what you wanted to do when you went to college. And I think through BIG, it has shown me that you can have many interests and incorporate them in different ways, and that it's okay to not know what you want to do. So I will be going to the University of St. Thomas next fall with an undecided business major.
For me, I've been struggling with what I want to do as a career for like ever. And I finally realized that I want to do law, but not necessarily a lawyer. So I'm still indecisive about that. But I'm looking into going to community college to pick up paralegal work, to see where that leads me first, and then maybe transfer into a four-year.
That's awesome. You guys are doing great work and very commendable, both of you.
I have an additional question. This actually would probably be for Trace. So just listening to the ladies talk about college preparedness and, and kind of taking that path, I'm wondering, does BIG do something to kind of counsel them or provide some alignment to transition from BIG into college?
Yes, we do. Not as formalized as we would like. We, of course, work with the excellent staff in the high schools and the counselors who are, who are doing that for them as well. What we really try to help them understand is that they, they know how to do the coursework and that. They've, they've done that, done it well. Is we try to make sure they understand that the time management skills and the space management skills and the networking and the professionalism, that those are important skills, that they're going to find themselves ahead of the game when they get to college. They won't have to think about, gosh, do I need to go back to my dorm room to study, or is the library the best place? Or they already have a sense of where they do the best work. So we try to communicate that to them.
And if I might add, there's one project, I'm not on it because of my golf schedule, but I have a couple of friends that are working on, I forget what they call it, but it's a kind of college readiness project. And they have interviewed or surveyed college students from BIG, and like, what did you wish you knew, what has helped you? And they are conducting different, different varieties of academic stuff, or even, I think, today or a couple of days ago, or upcoming, sometime soon-ish, they had a car, the, the display where they were two current Iowa BIG students that are very car savvy, showing how to do spare tires and different things that are important to know about cars for future college students.
Trace, Dr. Pickering, first of all, thank you for moving the BIG in a positive direction and helping us meet our goal of every learner future-ready, every learner. What, what percentage do you know go on to college from the BIG program? And I'm, go ahead.
Yeah, I have that stat, but I didn't include it on here. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 80, 85% of our kids are going on to some form of post-secondary, two or four-year. The other 15 are either right in the workforce, military, or apprenticeships.
Okay, that's kind of where I, yeah, I wanted to know too, it's not only a four-year, but a two-year degree too, that, that we're providing, there's opportunities in a variety of, of different facets. Compliment to the girls, young ladies, excuse me, young ladies, on an excellent presentation. You will find St. Thomas a great, a great college. I have a daughter that graduated from there, so it was a great experience. And I just want to end with, I've been, I think a lot of the BIG, I've been trying to do my part to spread the word. Your program is coming in next week. I'm, I work with the retired educators, retired educational personnel in, in the area, and you're presenting at our luncheon next week, someone from the program, so to let, let some, some people know about the great things you're doing. So thank you.
Okay, Carolyn and Armani. Hey, Carolyn and Armani, thank you so much for joining us this evening and taking time out of this beautiful day, and how proud we are of you. This is not an easy place to come and introduce yourself and talk about personal journeys that you've been through in this program, so thank you for sharing. It's important for others to hear that as well. Trace, I can't believe it's been six years. And the growth of this pro, how many students did you have your first year?
We had 12 our first year, and we'll be at 250 next year.
And you're at 250. So, it's obviously a program that our students are interested in and continue to enroll in, so thank you for your work and, and all the wonderful things that are happening. Good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are, we're going to approve, hopefully, the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget amendment that Dave eloquently spoke about earlier. It's recommended, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we're going to go into the agreement engagement letter for school infrastructure sales, service, and use tax revenue bonds. Dave talked about that earlier as well. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreement engagement letter with Piper Jaffray for school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds, private placement. Again, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, passes. Next is the recommendation for the Board of Education to approve the engagement letter with Dorsey and Whitney LLP as the District Bond Counsel for school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds, private placement. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Passes as well. Thank you. Next, we, I'd like someone to read a motion to go into a closed session for the evaluation of professional competency in accordance with Code of Iowa, Section 21.5. Is that a one, aye?
It's a, it's a one and then subsection aye.
A one, aye, thank you very much. Could someone read that for me, please?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, May 13, 2019, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation, and that the individual has requested a closed session as provided in Section 21.5i6 of the Iowa Code.
Sarah, second. One aye.
One aye, thank you.
Sarah, second, please.
Second.
So roll call action.
Director Portrading.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Vice President Maesterling. Aye. Thank you, everybody. Please take your school board calendar, get ready for a bunch of awesome graduations as we celebrate every one of our students in this senior class graduating. And we stand adjourned.